The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of Weyburn City Council, held in the council chambers at 6:00 PM Monday, September 12th, 2022. The first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular council meeting and strategic planning priorities meeting. Do you have a motion?
I'll make that motion, your worship.
Second?
I can second that, your worship.
All in favor, pass the amnesty. Additions to the agenda, Mr. Warren?
Thank you, your worship. No additions from administration tonight.
Counsel? Nothing? Public hearings and notices, there are none. Today, we have a delegation. Majesta, is that right?
Yes.
And how do you say it? Malcolm?
Malcolm.
Malcolm? Okay. Majesta, Malcolm will be speaking to us today about asking for the introduction of chickens, allowance that they have chickens in our backyards. So if you would please come forward and do your presentation, you have 15 minutes there.
Perfect, thank you.
And then there's, you can leave time within that 15 minutes for questions afterwards.
Perfect, thank you. First of all, thank you for having me, I really appreciate it. I'm just gonna, I printed off just a little bit of fun facts and stuff about backyard chickens and kind of whatnot, so I'm just gonna pass it to you. Maybe pass it down. So a little bit about me, I was, I grew up in B.C., so I moved here a few years ago, so backyard chickens is something that we do out there. Food security and food sustainability and stuff has always been something I've been really passionate about. It's been something that I've kind of worked with for about 20 years, 15, 20 years, working with communities, wanting communities to really kind of be empowered where their food comes from, the quality of food. And backyard chickening is one of those things. So the idea of backyard chickening would be, we would have between four to six chickens in a backyard, proper enclosures. This is not all willy-nilly like on a farm. These would be properly enclosed, predator-proof, so on and so forth. These programs have been running all over Canada for almost two decades so far. B.C. alone, we're at about 15 years where we've been doing this, so clearly this program works. It's weird that Saskatchewan doesn't, because I always thought of Saskatchewan kind of as farm country of Canada. The idea behind this is to give families the opportunity to not just get a taste of farm life, because many can't have farms, that's just reality for them, but all the things that come with it. This creates food, the manure is used for gardening, which, you know, now you can grow your garden. They can help reduce the waste in our landfills, and so on and so forth. So that's something that we want, wanting to promote in Weyburn. The health of eggs versus store-boughten from farm-grown, we know they carry 25% more vitamin E, 75% more beta-carotene, and up to 20 times more higher omega-3 fatty acids. These provide, they reduce inflammation, they provide antioxidants, and so on and so The pilot program that we will present, that we are interested in doing, would be probably about two years before you guys will be able to sit down and reevaluate what are the pros and cons, what are the bumps in the road that we would need to change. Because there's so many other projects that have been done in Canada, we have a really good foundation of how to make it successful, and it is successful because, like I say, every province in Canada is doing it. And they're doing it for a reason, there's people that want to, whether it's a pet, or having a little bit more food security, so on and so forth. We're also using chickens, they're also using chickens in mental health. Mental health, it's a huge program that's in the States, they're running over 40 programs there. They're being introduced into Alberta right now, and B.C. is looking at into doing it. So this would be something for somebody who autism, ADHD, PTSD, depression, all of these things, chickens are being used. Not everybody can have a dog. Service dogs, they're expensive, they take years, the waiting lists are years, I worked in the service dog training industry. It is insanely long waiting list to get a service dog. People are using chickens. The studies are everywhere, you can look them up, they're literally everywhere on the positive impact that chickens have on people, not just, like I say, not just as a food source, but just in life in general. So, like I said, this is something that we really want to introduce into Weyburn and in our community, and there's a huge interest. We've done a petition, we've talked to many members of the community, and there seems to be a lot of people that really want to do this, and they want to do it the right way, obviously. So I guess that's kind of all I have to say, I'm prepared for any questions. If anybody has any questions, I would love to answer those.
I guess the question becomes is, do you know how they're regulated in B.C. where you came from?
Yep.
How they're regulated, like who checks to make sure they're being taken care of, and who chairs to make sure that there's anything that would be provided to our city administration, you could provide to our city administration about this?
Great question, great question. So what we do is, it's the same as the way we're in Humane Society, right? If you're neglecting your animals, you're going to get a phone call, somebody's gonna come and check up on you, and that would be, that's just owning any animal, and a chicken would fall into that category. If you're owning any sort of animal and you're neglecting them, you are liable to get into trouble if you're not providing a safe shelter, if you're not providing food, adequate food and water, you're not taking care of them. So that would definitely be something that would be, you know, would fall under just, if they're not, then the Weyburn Humane Society would be in. I would be more than willing to piggyback with Weyburn Humane Society as somebody that can be called. If somebody's, you know, if a chicken gets loose and somebody's, we catch a chicken, we probably don't want it sitting down at the Weyburn Humane Society, if we've got a bunch of dogs there, it might be a little bit unpleasant. I have no problems doing that, I have no problems even implementing something like, if your chicken gets loose and you got three days to claim, if you don't, somebody else gets to, somebody else who already has chickens or a farm who wants it, they get it, that's just, you know, if that happens, it happens.
I guess then that'll get down to the next point, was that you can use you as a reference point to, as we research more.
Absolutely, absolutely. I, this is something I'm hugely passionate about, I did it back home with great success. I've had many conversations with many members of the community, so I've been, I've had questions with farmers, I've become really good friends with Bill, many people know him in the community, he is what we call the chicken expert, he's had chickens in town as well as out of town, so he knows a lot, so I've kind of introduced him to the whole backyard chickening. He did it many, many years ago, so he's also familiar about the pros and cons and the things, and the bumps we might run into. One of the biggest concerns that we heard from many people, well, a few of them was, are there gonna be roosters? Roosters are a hard no in any province. You don't have roosters in the backyard, because nobody really wants to hear your rooster at 5:00 in the morning. Predators was another issue. This is simply solved by creating a secure enclosure. If you're using hardware cloth and whatnot, nothing's going into your coop. I've done it, my chickens had a hardware cloth, and we had way more predators coming into our backyard than out here. I mean, I've seen everything in my backyard, everything other than a moose, I've seen cougars in my backyards, I've seen packs of coyotes, I've seen bears, I've seen hawks, I've had, we had breeding, a breeding pair of bald eagles right on the pool beside our house for many, many years. And so predator-proofing is, you know, obviously that's something you do. And again, nothing's 100%. And if a predator, you know, if you lose an animal to a predator, it's no different than if your cat was running loose and your cat was, you know, hit by a car, or an owl swooped up and took it, it's the same, you run the same risks. If you're not taking care of your animals and you're not being responsible, you run that risk.
Go ahead, Dick.
Thank you, your worship. Thanks, by the way, for coming.
Thank you.
And sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
The question I have for you is, is there any concern you have about the sound or smell with these chickens?
Absolutely, thank you for your question. So there's several different ways we can go around this. So food would be, your food obviously needs to be contained. I personally, I have always used the deep litter method, so that creates no smell. Part of this is gonna be a learning process, and I am a huge advocate of this, this is something I'm really passionate about, I have no problems walking people through this. This would be no different than if you got a dog, if you got a cat, you want to learn how to do it the right way, right? If you get a dog, if your dog is pooping in your backyard, you want to clean it up, right? If you have a cat and with a cat litter, you want to clean your cat litter, otherwise it's going to be unpleasant. And so it'd be the same for a chicken. If you're going to have a chicken in a coop in a run, you're going to have to find a way, whether it's a deep litter method, or going in and cleaning out your litter, or your bedding and making sure that that's clean, absolutely. Does that answer that? Okay, perfect.
Laura?
Thank you, your worship. Majesta, Bill, thank you so much for bringing all this information. Majesta, the communities that you've been a part of that have allowed the chickens, have they seen a higher predator and pest increase, you know, with rats and that kind of stuff that brings the potential for disease?
Yes, so, great question, thank you. So predators, predators are always an issue, whether you have a bird feeder in your backyard, whether you have a cat that roams around, whether you have a small dog hanging out in your backyard and you leave your dog food and cat food outside, you are susceptible to a predator coming in. Predators are always looking for an easy meal. The great thing about a predator, they're not gonna stick around. If you've got a predator that's coming looking for a meal and they can't get it, they're going to move along, they're not going to wait around for three months or for that opportunity, they're opportunistic. If there's a way to get your food, to get a chicken, they will. The reality is, is everything wants to eat chickens. Chickens are at the bottom of the, I mean, they're, they're at the bottom of the totem pole, everything wants to eat a chicken. So you do what you have to do to make sure that that enclosure is secure. And again, I go back to hardware cloth, it is an amazing product, it does, it does a really good job at keeping your chickens secure, you make sure your roost is secure at night, so that nothing can come in, raccoons and stuff like that. And at the end of the day, without trying to sound too harsh, if I have chickens and a bird of prey comes into my backyard, or a raccoon, and they take my, and they get my chicken, at the end of the day, it's my cost. It's, I'm the one that suffers, you're not going to suffer that, I will. It's just the same as if I had my cat roaming around and you hit my cat, it's my fault, really ultimately, it's my fault. I didn't do my due diligence, and I wasn't a responsible pet owner, and I'm the one who's suffering the consequence, because now I have to tell my family and either replace it or whatever. You might feel guilt about it versus a predator, but at the end of the day, it's really about ownership. And I recognize that there's been, some people have expressed like, well, what about people who aren't taking care of animals? I recognize that, I truly do, I know that there are people who are not, who aren't great animal owners. I work in a rescue, I rescue dogs, I've been doing it for three years. I've seen some pretty horrific things when it comes to dogs, I've seen some pretty horrific things when it comes to cats, and I've seen some pretty horrific things on farms themselves. So part of the battle is education, we want people to be educated, and we want people to make good decisions, and we want people to treat their chickens the same way they would a dog, a cat, even though they are supplying food, it is a food source, it's the same as the farmer who takes care of his cow. We know, the studies have been done, the farmer who takes care of his cow, he loves his cow, he's out there in the middle of minus 40 degrees bringing, making sure that cow gets inside, and is loved and taken care of right till the end of the, you know, right till the end of their life. We know the meat tastes better versus the cows that travel, we know that. It's the same for chickens, chickens that are happy and healthy and well taken care of, they produce more eggs, they produce better eggs with more nutritional value. So I think it's super important.
Two more minutes, anybody else? Ryan?
Thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you.
You said in here that it's great news for the dump, we can reduce the amount of garbage going to our landfills, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, great. So chickens are omnivores, they kind of eat everything. So a lot of people who do gardening and stuff like that, a lot of people don't have compost. Composting, I personally have done composting, it's not as easy as people think. When you have to get in there and you're trying to lift up that stuff, it's heavy and whatnot, so a lot of people get discouraged and they just throw their food in the garbage, and it goes to the landfill. Some places have some amazing composting programs, not all of them, for us, most of your waste would go to the chickens, so all your garden waste, grains, anything like that can go to them, you can feed the meat if you want. And it's, I know it's a little bit morbid, but, you know, you could throw, you made turkey, and you got some turkey, throw your turkey out there and they will clean it up, and nice and clean, and so, and in exchange, that manure is converted into black gold, we call it black gold, it is filled with nutrients, and you can put that in your garden, and then the garden is what's providing you food. So it's, you know, it's a great symbiotic relationship, that's.
Thank you.
Yeah.
You have a last question?
Thanks, your worship, thanks, sorry. Thanks for coming, I appreciate all this information.
Yeah.
I know a lot more about chickens than I, besides how good they taste. You said in your notes here that you have it listed out by province, Ontario allows, Nova Scotia allows, so to build on the mayor's question, so in these other provinces, is it regulated at the provincial level, or do different municipalities within the province have a regulatory body as well?
Great question, so it is municipality, so it is by city. So when I'm showing you all the provinces, so for example Quebec, Quebec only has four or five communities that allow it as a general, if you don't live in one of those communities, you can't, it's against their bylaw. Chicken, the chickens are, this is a bylaw that is within communities, there are many communities that don't even have it, so people just do, because there's no written bylaw one way or the other, so many communities have them until they've been told otherwise. So this isn't a provincial thing, if you look in B.C. and stuff like that, I didn't give the specific, but if you look up any of these provinces, you can actually find out where the provinces, what the bylaw, what the specific bylaw is, and they're all different, some bylaws, or sorry, some provinces have it that you need to let your bylaw officer know, so I would come up to my bylaw officer and say, hey, I'm gonna have six chickens in my backyard, we're raising them for this and this, this is my enclosure plan, this is what I'm doing. If you choose to get rid of them, you would have to inform the city council and say, hey, we're no longer doing chickens, so that they know. I'd like to stay away from the rules as much as possible, I want, I'd like to kind of do a soft launch of, let's see how this works, let's use the guidelines that the other provinces have done that seem to work, in terms of how many chickens you can have, ages, all of that kind of stuff, obviously no roosters, again, going back to the rooster thing, so I hope that answers your question.
Yeah, I think so, yeah, yeah, thanks.
Okay, so that is about time, and then we'll, I thank you for your presentation here.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
We'll take this for information, we'll let our administration go forward on this, and then we will quickly get back to you.
Perfect, and like I say, I'm available for questions and as a resource person.
Okay, our clerk has your number and?
Yes, I've been speaking to Nick.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, you guys.
Thank you. Reports of standing committees, Mr. Van Betje, police commissioner.
Thank you, your worship. A regular meeting of Weyburn Police Commission is held in the administration boardroom at 4:00 PM Wednesday, August 24th, 2022. There is no correspondence. Chief London presented the mayor's report for July 2022, which included the Weyburn Police Service monthly stats report, Weyburn Police Service eight-year average charges for July, community engagement for July, mental health assistant calls for July, and year versus year overtime and overtime report, staff report, all for July. The council's report, council's payable report for July and June was provided to the board. Chief provided the July budget report and the budget comparison report for July 31st. Report shows a net operating deficit budget in the amount of $39,548. Chief London provided the crime severity index report, showing comparisons with other Saskatchewan cities for crime severity index, violent crime severity index and non-violent crime severity index, with Weyburn being the lowest in all three categories. Moved by Councilor Van Betje and seconded by Councilor Corrigan, the reports presented be received and filed by the board. There is no unfinished business. In-camera items moved by Krista Hubick and seconded by Councilor Corrigan, that at 5:03 the Weyburn Police Commission moved into closed session, and at 5:22 the Weyburn Police Commission moved out of closed session. Inquires and announcements, Police Association golf tournament is on September 2nd at 1:00 PM. Mayor Roy is attending a Sask Police Board meeting in Saskatoon on September 11th, and Weyburn is hosting the Fall Meeting for Saskatchewan Association of Chiefs of Police on October 12th and 13th at the Weyburn Travel Lodge. Meeting was adjourned at 5:28 PM.
Questions, comments? Yes, I did go up on Saturday, Sunday, the police drove up, come back, and the same day, and went through the meeting, and is just trying to move forward with Saskatchewan Police Board and getting things organized, so we can talk to our Saskatchewan Police Commission as a unified body. With that, we will just stand, have the report received and move forward. I need a motion for a consent agenda, one motion please, on a cash activity report for July, utilities report for May, June, July, fire department report for August, water treatment plant report for August, and building department report for August. Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, make a motion that the items on a consent agenda be accepted as presented.
I'll second that.
I'll second that motion.
You second it?
Sorry, Laura.
Who's seconding it? Laura?
Councilor Moore's seconding.
Okay.
I will second that, your worship, thank you.
Call a question, all in favor? Carrie, yes. I just want to go back to this, that there was a Canadian Police Association meeting in Saskatoon, that's kind of, I went to the kind of tail end of that one there, and it was quite interesting that this, that we have a report from Councilor Van Betje on the police commission out there. A lot of cities, they say their citizens don't even realize that they have police commissions out there, so we make sure that we inform our citizens of Weyburn that we do have a police commission, and we are active within the rules. Motions, council's payable, could I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'll make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $1,690,128.56 from August 6th to September 9th, 2022 be passed for payment.
Your worship, if no one objects, I will second that motion.
Very good. Discussion? Call the question, all in favor? Carrie, Nancy. Tax enforcement, property tender, finance, please?
Yes, could you make, so under the provisions of the Tax Enforcement Act, the city took ownership of a property, and it went up for tender. This property was at 206 Water Street, Lot 15, Block 68, Plan Number AG4899. And so on August 4th, 2022, the property tender under the Tax Enforcement Act was posted on SAS tenders in the Weyburn Review and the city's website. Tenders were received by the city of Weyburn no later than August 31st, 2022 at 2:00 PM. A total of three tenders were received, so the tenders received were from Jack Carlton Sales for $35,700, C.C. Cozier for $45,550, and Kevin Rhonda Mason and Ethan Mailey for $64,500. After all the outstanding property taxes and judgments on the property, the estimated refund to the previous owner is shown, it's a percent, or there's a percentage for the property tax and the judgments that have to be paid back first. So of all the three bids, they did all meet the requirement of the minimum bid of $33,000, and they followed the instructions per the bidder's application, and it's recommended that the property tender under the Tax Enforcement Act be awarded to Kevin Rhonda Mason and Ethan Mailey at the amount of $64,500.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, your worship, I make a motion that the bid of Kevin Rhonda Mason and Ethan Mailey for the purchase of the property at 206 Water Street, Lot 15, Block 68, Plan Number AG4899, in the amount of $64,500 be accepted as-is, where-is.
Second? I'll second that, your worship. Discussion? Mr. Van Betje?
The sale is final, there's no backing out or anything like that, it is what it is.
Correct, yes, so the sale was as-is, they viewed the property, we had quite a few people come view it, and had the three bids.
Thank you.
Yep.
Call a question, all in favor? Carrie, Nancy. 2023 budget timelines, city manager?
Thank you, your worship, so I provide a report to council tonight as we prepare for 2023 budget. So the city of Weyburn has a policy that establishes the guidelines and responsibilities for the annual budget process. The implementation of the annual budget policy has improved the overall budget process since it's been involved since 2017. So going through some key responsibilities and timelines, city council is to direct myself as to the budget increase and forthcoming year by September 15th, so kind of give me direction moving forward. Approve the annual budget by December 20th of each year, and then if, unless they do not do that, there has to be an alternate motion to do a target date for us for budget. Director of Finance is to issue templates back off to our department heads, this has already been completed, and then compile all departments' budgets and submit it back to myself for review by November 1st. The department heads are to prepare and submit a budget within the guidelines directed by the city manager by October 20th, and then detail of any extraordinary expenditures for the forthcoming year. And then for myself, the city manager to present the budget to council no later than the second council meeting in November. So every year, city council, myself, and city staff work towards developing the annual budget. The budget serves in outline of how money that comes into the city should be spent to maintain and improve the city. As the city is limited on the amount of resources available, the budget helps determine which objectives have the highest priority and will produce the greatest positive impact in the community. The city of Weyburn develops a yearly balanced operating and capital budget to provide growth and sustainability today and into the future. A balanced budget means money spent must be equal to the money that is raised. To balance a budget, the city can either increase its revenues, so through property taxes, fees, and other opportunities, or through reducing expenses and costs of services. So the operating budget covers day-to-day spending on services such as recreation programs, garbage collections, parks maintenance, snow removal, and emergency services. The operating budget also includes yearly projects to improve city-owned infrastructure, and to also help make Weyburn a safe, convenient, and livable community. The capital budget is the city's plan to purchase, build, maintain, repair, and replace assets, including our fleet, roads, water, wastewater systems, public buildings such as the recreation facilities, public works facility, fire station, police station, and our parks. So they're a main source of revenue that we see as municipality, so budget initiatives can receive funding from a single source, or a majority of what we do is from funding from multiple different sources. So the funding, the following are funding sources, so we have property taxes, rates, and fees, we have grants, and we receive grants from many different funding sources, development charges, internal reserves, and then if required, external loans. To assist with the development of this upcoming budget in 2023, I am proposing the following timelines. So one, on October 24th of 2022, we'll have a budget presentation to the council meeting that day. So we'll have department budget presentations made by myself, by our department heads, also the director of finance is to develop a budget proposal report and provide budget impacts in a summary back to council as well. Following that, from October 25th to November 18th, we are seeking input from the public. So opportunities to provide input would be provide to one central source, so what we're recommending to council is that this comes through to our questions@weyburn.ca. This will allow us to have ease of reporting, it's easier if one source of information is being provided, so we can actually provide that back off to council. Input received from the public would be provided to council at the November 20th council meeting. If there's individuals or organizations requesting an opportunity to appear as a delegation before council regarding the budget, they must submit that to City Clerk Richter by November 18th before that meeting, to give us time to make sure we have it all prepared. So currently, we have municipal budget on our weyburn.ca/budget. Our plan is to enhance that website and to also advertise this timeline to the public. The website is used to provide informative budget information, allowing citizens the opportunity to learn about the budget process, that includes timelines and opportunity to provide input to learn about past budgets, so we actually have a list of a number of our past budgets on that website currently, and to see budget proposal reports, and then also the meeting video that we do at that meeting on the 24th of October. Following that, on November 28th, we would have council have a further discussion about budget at a council meeting, so this will discuss the input that's received from the public, and this will provide that opportunity for delegations, individuals or organizations to appear before council regarding the budget, and then discussion and direction from council back to administration for budget as we continue to go through the process. And finally, on December 12th, would be final budget approval at the council meeting. As stated within the policy, it has to be done by that meeting, so we're trying to make sure we meet that guideline. An open budget process offers citizens an opportunity to learn about the municipal budget process, provide input on priorities, and influence the allocation of public resources. Transparent and inclusive budgeting facilitates citizens' understanding of issues and government processes, ensures transparency. ensures transparency and accountability, improves the quality of decision-making, and increases support for decisions made by our council. So I just have it into an easy chart, all the dates I talked about for easier reference for council. And then I'm just making a recommendation to council that council approve the two thousand and twenty-three budget timelines as presented.
Do you have a motion, please?
Yes, I do, your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that council accept the two thousand and twenty-three budget timelines as presented by our city manager.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion on the timelines, and timelines only. Nothing? I just want to say thank you for this, this is very good and we've, it's very laid out and well organized, so thank you, city manager Warren. All in favor? Carrie unanimously. Introduction of bylaws, city manager, again, you're up. The two thousand and twenty-two dash thirty-four forty-seven Official Community Plan Bylaw Amendment. We've had first reading on that already, so this, we're coming back for this one, so if you would lead out.
Yeah, thank your worship. So as Mayor Roy just stated, this is a discussion on OCP and zoning bylaw amendments for bylaws two thousand and twenty-two, three, four, four, seven, and two thousand and twenty-two, three, four, four, eight. This report is developed by our development officer, Janine Fletcher. So a zoning bylaw amendment application, corresponding official community plan amendment application from Sierra and Vine Design from Joanne Beach has been received in regards to the property at four twenty-four, Tenth Avenue Southeast. The request is to re-designate the property an official community plan from the existing residential designation to a mixed-use designation as that the property would be rezoned from R two to a D C D, Signal Hill, mixed, heritage, mixed-use district control. These changes are requested to facilitate development of several different commercial uses than existing building, as well as a couple of residential units. Once again, the property is located on Tenth Avenue Southeast with the TC Douglas Center to the west, Heritage Village, the Community Gardens to the south, and a church and residential to the north. The property is legally described as parcel number two zero three eight, three eight, three, three, zero, Block E, Plan one zero two three, four, nine, nine, two, zero. So it actually was went through a, through a subdivision as a part of the city's sale of the property in two thousand and twenty. As mentioned by Mayor Roy, council gave the first reading to this at the August fifteenth regular meeting. So public notices were sent out in accordance with the city's public notice policy for public hearing to occur on September twelfth after our council meeting. No comments or concerns have been received at the time of the writing. So the development proposal applicant has started to operate commercial business out of the building, which came to the attention of staff, at which the point that applicants were advised they didn't comply with the zoning for the property. So an OCP and zoning amendment process was initiated. Staff met with the applicants to review the development proposal of the various uses and they had planned for the building and had determined the best solution moving forward. Development proposal involves commercial uses on the first three floors with studio space, retail, and potential coffee shop and/or similar uses for that space. Sierra and Vine is the owner and the main tenant within the building with studio space for sewing clothing. They also are proposing a couple of residential use units within the building. Previously, there was a caretaker's unit in the rear addition to the building for a rental unit. The mixed-use designation was determined to be the best-fit intended mix of uses at the property with commercial and residential uses at the site. The direct control district was determined to be the best option moving forward to facilitate adaptive reuse for the property to help protect the heritage designation of the property for the future. As you can see, the land location is showing here on the map. Also aerial view of the map. So Official Community Plan two thousand and twenty-three, four, one, one. The property has a residential land use designation in the Official Community Plan. The applicant is requesting that lands be designated mixed-use on the land use designation map of the OCP. The purpose of the designation is to provide for areas of transition from commercial to residential to allow for a combination of commercial, retail, professional, institutional, and residential land use to exist side by side and/or above one another. The mixed-use designation is currently used in the area surrounding the central business district. However, however, the property is a bit unique in the surrounding area, is designated residential, and parks and open space. However, there are properties in the area that are used for traditional residential uses. So there is a church in the north, like I stated before, TC Douglas Center and Water Tower to the west. And then they have access communications within the area as well, Heritage Village and the Community Gardens to the south. Some of these uses fit within the residential zones as well as it can be considered institutional uses as it would be considered current commercial zones. The property has been used since nineteen eighties, since nineteen eighties as a community recreation facility, so formerly Signal Hill Art Center. And it had an art gallery and arts studios and nursing home and hospital prior to the city's operation of that facility. The six, the mixed-use designation reflects the transitional character of the surrounding area respects the existing residential. So going through the statements of provincial interest, the proposal is consistent with the statements of provincial interest. And a redesignation encourages opportunities for the reuse, preservation of historical buildings as per section six point four point two. The proposal is also consistent with section six point one, five, point one in, as it contributes to complete community by providing some smaller scale commercial use in the area and a little access neighborhood for commercial uses. So going through zoning bylaw two thousand and twenty, thirty-four, twelve, the property is currently zoned in R two, which is residential detached, which allows the detached, semi-detached, and duplexes as low-rise apartments and some institutional uses. Applicant has originally requested that the land be rezoned to mixed-use zone. However, it's a better use for existing mixed zones, did not allow for some of the uses in applicants' development proposals that are provided and given the constraints of existing building and the heritage designation within the area. The D C D one zone was developed in consultation with the applicant in a similar to neighborhood commercial and mixed-use zones with some site specification requirements for heritage designation. So there's a list here which, what fits within the D C D one zone. So the direct control district will help facilitate development proposals for the studio, art galleries, retail, restaurant, or cafe space will be completely compatible in scale with strong residential zoning. The property is a municipal heritage property, which comes into requirement for alterations to be approved by city use to be undertaken, which is also reflected within the D C D one zone. Zoning also helps facilitate the adaptive use or reuse of the building for purposes and for future preservations. So development permits will still need to be obtained by applicants following the rezoning to ensure compliance with the zoning bylaw for all use of the building. So within the district plan, this is circulated back into the district planning commission with no comments received. And there's a letter attached for council's record from that group. Also, for ministerial approval, official community plan amendments must be approved by the Minister of Government Relations upon a final reading, which will hopefully happen tonight. And it will be submitted to the province for ministerial approval for both bylaws. Will take effect once ministerial approval is provided. So two options in front of council, option one, council holds a public hearing for both bylaw two thousand and twenty-three, four, four, seven and two thousand and twenty-three, four, four, eight. And council gives a second and third reading to the bylaws to amend the official community plan and designate the aforementioned lands as mixed-use on lands use designation map. Also, council gives a second, third reading to bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, three, four, four, eight being a bylaw to amend, zoning bylaw to rezone the aforementioned lands, R two to D C D one. And then also council directs administration to submit the bylaws to the Ministry of Government Relations for approval. So option two is council gives a refusal. If council doesn't provide refusal, they have to provide reasons for the refusal. So staff recommendation is to move forward with option number one.
With that being said, I declare for bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four, forty-seven. It declared the public hearing is declared open, invite any parties wishing to speak regarding the bylaw. They may do so at this time. First call? Second call? Third call? The, the speaking time is closed, public hearing time is closed. May we have a motion for a second reading, please?
Your worship, I'll make a motion that bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four, forty-seven, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan bylaw two thousand and twenty, thirty-four, eleven, to incorporate and include in the land use designation map for parcel number two zero three eight, three eight, three, three, zero, Block E, Plan one oh two, three, four, nine, nine, two, zero, from residential to mixed-use be read a second time.
Do you have a?
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Call the question, all in favor? Carrie unanimously. Third reading?
Thanks, your worship. A motion that bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four, forty-seven, being a bylaw to amend the official community plan, bylaw two thousand and twenty, thirty-four, eleven, to incorporate and include in the land use designation map for parcel two oh three, eight, three, eight, three, three, zero, Block E, Plan one oh two, three, four, nine, nine, two, zero, from residential to mixed-use be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that motion, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carrie unanimously. So bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four, forty-seven is passed. Bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four, forty-eight, I declare open a public hearing on that bylaw. First call for anyone wishing to speak. Second call for anyone wishing to speak. Third call for anyone wishing to speak. I declare the public hearing closed. Do you have, go forward with the reading?
Your worship, I would move that bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four, forty-eight, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two thousand and twenty, thirty-four, twelve, to rezone parcel number two oh three, eight, three, eight, three, three, zero, Block E, Plan one oh two, thirty-four, ninety-nine, twenty, from R two to D C D I be read a second time.
Second motion?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the favor, all in favor? Carrie unanimously. Third motion?
Your worship, I would move that bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four, forty-eight, a bylaw to amend zoning bylaw two thousand and twenty, thirty-four, twelve, to rezone parcel number two oh three, eight, three, eight, three, three, zero, Block E, Plan one oh two, thirty-four, ninety-nine, twenty, from R two to D C D I be read a third time and passed.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carrie unanimously. There's a bylaw two thousand and twenty-two, thirty-four, forty-eight, zoning bylaw amendment has been passed. There's no unfinished business, new business, city manager Warren, a special occasions permit, please, two motions here.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. So we have another report from Janine Fletcher, our development officer, about a special occasion permit, temporary use permit request for an outdoor license event on October sixth, a portion of the sidewalk and road in front of the fifty-one, Third Street Northeast. So this request is from Todd Bedore, Bedore, to have a request for permission to host an S L G A license event on the sidewalk and road, parking lane adjacent to their building, which is at Big Jim's Brew Shop. The event would take place on October sixth between three P M and seven P M with fencing around the licensed area and a food vendor's site, a vendor on site. So notices were given to, to request a closure of a portion of the sidewalk and road and circulated around to property owners, and there was no comments or concerns received. It was also provided in many city departments with no comment or concerns raised. As you can see, there's a map with a vehicle kindly put in front to show you guys where the area would be fenced off for this event. So under the zoning bylaw, five point nine regulates temporary use and section five point nine point three provides standards for temporary uses with the following conditions, that they must have adequate washroom facilities. Accurate refuse containers shall be made available on the site and must be kept clean. Upon completion, all structures, associated materials, and signage must be removed and the site left in neat and tidy condition. Temporary uses and permitted are permitted for a maximum of three days. The proposed temporary use is only for one day, which is on October sixth. So we have a couple of options in front of council. So option one is to approve the temporary use permit, two thousand and twenty, zero, zero, four, for an outdoor license event on October sixth in front of fifty-one, Third Street, subject to the following conditions. Permission is granted for the closure of a portion of the sidewalk and the parking lane adjacent to the site. And applicants shall ensure access to the budding properties be maintained. Arrangements must be made for access to the washroom facilities. Accurate refuse containers shall be provided on site and must be kept clean. Application, applicant is responsible for obtaining a liability insurance for the event. Applicants shall be responsible for repairing or paying the cost for repairing any damages that may occur during the duration of the event. Temporary use event shell comply with applicable city bylaws, including but not limited to our traffic bylaw, the property maintenance and nuisance abatement bylaw, and a noise bylaw. On, upon completion of the event, all structures, associated materials, and signs shall be removed and the site left in neat and tidy condition. Option two is for council to refuse. Again, if you're refusing, just to make sure we provide the reasoning for that refusal. The staff recommendation is to allow for the temporary use application for this event.
Do you have a motion, please? The two, there's two motions. The first motion will be a special occasions permit. Do you have a motion, please? Oh, there's going to be required two motions, please, the special occasions permit. We'll start off with that one, do you have a motion?
Yes, your worship, that temporary use permit, two thousand and twenty-two point zero, zero, four, for an outdoor license event on October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, in front of fifty-one, Third Street Northeast be approved with the recommended condition.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
Discussion? Hearing none, call the question, all in favor? Carrie unanimously. Second motion for the liquor license, liquor license event, outdoor event, do you have a motion?
Your worship, I move that council support the request of Todd Bedore of Big Jim's Brew Shop at and in front of fifty-one, Third Street Northeast to make application for the issuance of an outdoor liquor permit by Saskatchewan Liquor and Gaming Authority from October sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, from two P M to seven P M to be approved.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carrie unanimously. We are now down to inquiries and announcements, just as we start before anybody else. I want to say that on behalf of the city of Webern, we are saddened by the recent passing of Her Majesty Queen Elizabeth the Second. The queen will be remembered by many as a symbol of devotion and service. We can draw strength from the light of her example. Our sincere thoughts go out to the royal family, the people of the United Kingdom, and all who mourn the loss of Her Majesty. I would also like to make mention that on anybody wishing to enter their condolences to the, to the royal family, you go onto the Government of Saskatchewan website and you can enter in, there's a online one, I think for the next two weeks that is up, that you can enter your thoughts and your statements to us to what it is, so. And we will move forward and it is a changing era. We will now say, same, we want to, God save the king, now instead of God save the queen on that. But in light of that, also, I also like to give our thoughts and hearts go out to families of victims of communities of James Smith Cree Nation, Wellington and surrounding area. We mourn them alongside the entire province. We mourn them alongside the entire province of Saskatchewan for the lives lost and those healing from these violent acts. Respect the city lowers its flags at City Hall to half-mast on September sixth and remain lowered one day for each life lost. So that is the two formal announcements that I wish to make on behalf of the city. Going forward, any other announcements that we have? Jen?
Yes, thank you. I would just like to speak a little bit on the recycling collection changes. So if your household still has a GFL recycling bin, which was our previous provider, or you have not received your new Goliath disposal recycling bin, which is the new provider, please visit our website. We have a form you can fill out. This will allow our engineering department to, will allow us to have the information to track bins and follow up on any issues. So if you do have any issues with your recycling, we encourage you, if you don't have your new bin or you still have your old bin, fill out this form, and then we can follow up on that request and get it fixed for you.
Okay, very good. Mr., okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
I'll do, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. Two happy notes for me. If you missed the rumble in the ring in July, the annual fall brawl is happening September the twenty-fourth at the Ag Society grounds. I encourage everyone to watch social media, discover Wayburn and the Wayburn this week, along with the Wayburn Review for further details coming out. And I just wanted to highlight that September the twenty-sixth is the beginning of Culture Days. A group of citizens called the Wayburn Community Committee for Truth and Reconciliation, with the help of the city, is holding a flag-raising ceremony to recognize Treaty Four on September the twenty-sixth at eleven A M. in front of City Hall, and there's going to be lots of guests from outside of the city coming in to take part, so I encourage everyone to welcome them to our city. And again, because that is the beginning of Culture Days, there's lots of other events going on, and I encourage everyone to check out wayburn.ca for those activities.
Yeah, thanks, Your Worship. Speaking about the Queen, we do have the Queen Elizabeth the Second Platinum Jubilee Medal, so we had the opportunity to partner with the Province of Saskatchewan as one of the municipalities, one of the organizations allowed to receive medals to provide back off to our citizens. So right now, we are accepting applications until October thirty-first. Eligibility criteria is quite easy. Must be a resident of Saskatchewan or have a link to Saskatchewan, so at the time that the medal is granted. Also, made a contribution to Canada, Saskatchewan, or within our region, so within Wayburn and area, and be alive on February the sixth, two thousand twenty-two, so someone who's born this year, they're eligible to receive this award as well. So we do really encourage people to put your application forms in. We'll receive them all until thirty-first, and we'll review those applications that come through, and then there'll be a provincial event to recognize more people. There already has been a couple of provincial events. There is more coming up here in the coming weeks, but the province will do these throughout the year to recognize these individuals. And the city has ten medals is what we've been provided by the Province of Saskatchewan.
And it is very interesting that we'll never see a Platinum Jubilee Medal again for someone that serves as long as what the Queen has. I thought it would be a long, long time of that. Any other anything else? There is, you said the rumble in the ring. What is that about again?
It's basically like the demo derby.
Oh, okay.
So just the fall version of that one.
Okay, so, all right. So, okay. I thought you were talking about the wrestling coming up on Thursday. Okay. Anyway, they have, other than that, that is, anything else with that? We're going on. There is no notice of motions, and with that, that is the end of the meeting, so I'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.